Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, welcome to this final environment committee meeting of the council. And we have apologies for that. Apologies from council. Thank you. We accept those apologies. Thank you. Anybody got any questions? Any good general questions? Well, excellent. We all had a chance to read the minutes of the meeting on the 17th of February. We have been there.
Yeah.
And budgets. I'm excited. We can do a little bit too. Let's see that. These are not quite finalized, are they? They are.
There's a few bits to go through, yeah?
Yeah. Bobby.
I would say there's more in than expected on 1085, which is good. And it's also worth noting that we've got the price switch for the mugger at Lacy, which is nice to see. That was difficult enough to get apart, obviously. And most of them all are what we expect, to be honest, this time of year. But it's nice to see that we corrected a bit more money than we anticipated. Always nice to say that, isn't it?
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you to the team for their diligent work. And we have ratified motion for councillor Ralph.
Thank you very much. I'll bring that myself. I mean, hopefully it's a pretty straightforward parade. So unless you want me to, I won't actually read it out again, but.
Well, I think it might be nice for everybody that's watching that hasn't got access to the agenda.
Okay, here we go then. So my motion is that in recognition of his contribution to Buckingham over many years and the esteem and affection in which he was widely held, I propose that this committee recommend to the full council that the new allotments located adjacent to the new cemetery be named the Derek Eisham allotments. And just to add a note or two, as I understand it, Derek was born and bred in Buckingham. I know he was here when a very young lad. And he certainly was an excellent servant of Buckingham throughout his life as both a town councillor and as a county councillor. And he lived quite close to the allotment site, so that seemed appropriate. On a personal note, he was the first who encouraged me to stand as a councillor. And once I was a councillor, or am a councillor, he took the time to show, describe and explain the history of the town council. He took me all around the pictures, which were all around the wall in those days, and explained a lot of things. He had a great sense of humour and we fell into greeting each other in German. And it was clear we had a fluency born of perhaps the total of 20 words that we had. So as my time as Buckingham Town Council is close to ending, it seems fitting to me on a personal level to complete my circle as it does beginning and ending with Derek.
Really true.
I'd love to second that. I've talked enough on council with Derek longer than most. And whatever event we were doing, Derek would be there. Derek also, in time on the town council chaired its very committee at different times. He was also very key in 2015 that we made provision for the next generation in the cemetery. So he was involved in the project. So he's only, pardon me, he also was one of the most friendly blokes in the town. And you could always see Derek in two places on a Saturday. One would be here and one would be at my Jardines. And he'd always be asking people how they were and what they were doing. And he was always interested in the community. So he's only fitting that we recognise Derek, back in a project that he was involved in at the onset. And I think he'd appreciate being recognised. He still has family in the town.
Thank you, Robert. John.
It wouldn't be surprising though, those who know me from past motions like this, that I don't agree. I mean, I hold Derek and course humanity in huge esteem. And he was a lovely, lovely man and a great councillor and a great citizen of the town and everything else. And I remember helping him out the room after the last meeting the impact attended before he sadly died. So notwithstanding all of that, I just don't agree with the principle of naming things after councillors. I think it just feels self-aggrandising and I don't think it does ask any of us councillors to somehow, even though we're supporting somebody else who sadly died, it somehow just doesn't feel right that somehow we're imposing the name of one of our own, as it were, on the town. And I would suggest that if we could rename anything other than the new allotments, maybe after the 300th anniversary of the fire of Buckingham or it's the 80th anniversary of the day or something like that. I just don't agree with naming things after people. It just feels, as I say, self-aggrandising and I don't agree with it.
Thank you, John. Lucy.
While I do, I can see John's point of view. I do think, you know, if we look at, we've got Embalton Way, Corvus Meadow. You know, there are, off the top of my head, I know there are more places, but I've drawn a blank. But there are quite a few places around the town which are, or have been in the past, named after living councillors even. And Derek Eisham's wife was actually my dinner lady when I was at primary school. And while she was a formidable woman, I found Derek to be very warm. And from what I've heard from everyone else on this council, I think he left enormous shoes to fill. And if any of us could be half the councillor that he was, I think we should be quite proud of ourselves. And it does seem fitting that, given that his time on earth was cut short, that we can name something after him, you know. We have the opportunity and I think we should grasp it. I think it's not, in this instance, it's not self-aggrandising because we're not, you know, we're not building statues of man and dedicating it to him. We're just, it's a memorial, it's to remember him by, rather than to say. I don't, yeah, I'm not expressing myself properly, but I think you get just what I'm trying to say.
Anybody else? Want to take more of it again?
Yeah, I don't disagree, John. There's been a longstanding precedent here. I was fortunate enough to know late Trevor Payman. And I served with the late Trevor Payman. I also was fortunate enough to visit him when he was in hospital before he passed away. And the council took a long look at that and we ended up with Payman's close because Trevor had been not only a district member, he'd been a mayor of Buckingham, he'd been all his offices there done. The thing with Derek is, Derek, I feel proud Derek because Derek ended up being chairman of the district councils. He was the best chairman in the council, I recall. He was the fair chairman. He took everyone in time. He knew how to chair a meeting and he showed no bias. And that is something that you rarely see. And also, as I say, he also was, whenever I was privileged enough to do anything, he always took the time to talk to my children and he always took an interest in what they were doing. He always took an interest in what everybody would do. I hope we can agree this to go to council. It would be a miss if we didn't. And there's lots of other people equally waiting to be recognised who have had long service to this town that I hope at some point in the future we can recognise them. As I said, Derek was involved in the project from the onset. So it seems only logical that Derek is recognised for his time. And I was sat with him on the last meeting, he attended next door to him. I was privileged to sit next to him in council. And some of the things he said in my ear were very, very, very immune.
Right, thank you. Anybody else? John.
Just to say, absolutely, I agree. He was a lovely, lovely, lovely man for so many ways. And none of what I'm saying is in any way that to be critical of him, thanks all of you. I just think it's a principle. And if I'd been in the room where decisions would be made about Payman Close or Embalton Way or whatever, I would have said exactly the same thing because I just don't agree with it. I said this before, I'll say it again. If any of you are on the council or like him or die, don't you dare. Because I will come back and.
Okay. Anybody else got anything else or shall we move to the votes?
Move to the one please.
Okay, so all those in favour, we've got both of us in second and John, those in favour.
John was against, did you?
No, sorry. Second John and Robin, sorry. I'm doing a robin now. Those in favour. That's everybody except John. So that's carried. Thank you.
I'm going to be out of there, I'm going to close them again.
Yeah. So the next item is item six, Rowway Walk Conservation Group report for new estates manager.
Administrator.
Administrator, sorry.
This was needless.
Oh, needless, sorry.
So a couple of bits to update you on. First of all, the Major Morton Avenue Conservation Group are no longer running. They have £200 left over and they have asked us if we could take that and make sure it goes to an appropriate organisation. And in other news, the Rowway Walk Conservation Group are, basically they've come to the end of the money that they've been given in the past. They don't have a committee. So what's been happening is that they've been using the Trust for Conservation Volunteers, TECB, to manage and run their sessions. That money's run out. The recommendation is that we use the £200 from Major Morton and we top it up with £700 that we do have in a budget that is appropriate and use that to keep the group going until it will be at least August. But they're going to try and get some match funding on the basis of that. I do think that possibly after the summer, we do need to have a look at our conservation groups and how we can support them better. But they're a very active group and I think it would be a shame for them to fold. So our recommendation is that we make this money available to them.
We've got Lucy and I've got Margaret.
Yeah, so I was with them on Saturday and they did ask, I said, I'll try and find out if we'd ever done a usage survey at any point in the last few years of that bit. If not, it's fine because they're going to walk and I throw it. It was for them because their lottery bid failed, but they were going to try and redo it, but with some figures and numbers.
Well, you haven't done much since we did quite a lot of work, which we submitted for the Bridleway. I don't think we've done anything recently.
Yeah, how, when was that?
Oh, it was a long, it was a good few years ago.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. That's fine. We've already discussed some other options to do their own surveying, so that's fine. It was just if there was something already there.
I think Lee might be able to help.
I believe they're doing some monitoring of usage for the new, I think, for the new purpose. Obviously. I'm happy we'll be able to get that paper out to the town.
Ah, fantastic.
So I'm assuming they'll do the fore and after usage.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have access to something at some point.
Cool. Okay, thank you. Margaret.
Just I propose that we accept the recommendations.
Okay, I've got John and I've got Bobby.
Second Margaret.
I'm happy with the recommendation.
Okay. So we go to the vote now, all those in favour. And Mr. Page's recommendations.
Yeah.
That's unanimous. Thank you. So next up we have. We need to set a floor for it, so set manager now.
Yeah, so this is, we found what the floor is, so there's a dip area. So when you go through the double doors and remain all the worst things, actually soon as you come in, it's actually this dip stretches always to the left to the kitchen door. And that whole side needs replacing, about a metre out from the wall, 20 or so metres long. And what it was, there's heating pipes that run all the way under there. And the piece of wood that was covering it was a very thin piece of ply and that just sort of collapsed. And so what we're going to do is get it all out, replace and strengthen where the pipes are and replace with matching wood. So it can repair and back into good old as it is.
Andy.
Hi. Well done for finding what the issue is. I can't see if we have any other options or I propose that we accept the recommendation.
Well then.
I know I'm happy to accept the recommendation. I do think we need to, future meeting, start to audit the total expenditure that we're spending on it. Think we need to start looking at what you crew costs on and start to discuss it in a more fluid way in maybe a future meeting. Because this isn't the only expense and we need to start looking at what it is because we have to structure our finances or discuss how we do it. And I think it would be irresponsible just to keep agreeing stuff without having a discussion about the long-term financial aspect.
Obviously.
But I would, I'd be to agree the recommendation now, but not to say that would be wrong.
John.
I'll second the motion if we need to take a do.
Okay, right. So we go to the votes. Those in favour, we accept your recommendations, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And the next item is the committee set of roof. Are you taking that one?
Oh, no, similar though, really care. This has been something we've already discussed. I brought it back just so I can let you know. I have had the conversation with Bucks, they have rolled the money to this financial year, but we absolutely have to spend it this financial year. We can't delay anymore. As I already discussed, we can't put panels on the roof because we'll just have to take them off again in a year or so's time. The roof is failing. The recommendation is that we proceed with getting quotes to replace the southern part of the roof and use the new homes bonus money that Bucks are currently holding in order to do that. The additional funding, which is about £4,000, I'm going to recommend that we use to put some work in place, ready to receive solar panels at a later date. So that would be putting brackets, ready to go. And probably one of the main things that might be quite costly is that the fire risk assessment needs emergency cut off by the door, which means that we'll have to actually root some ducting of appropriate size round the building in order that there's an emergency cut off on the front door, which is something that the solar panel companies flagged up as potentially being costly. So that's the working strategy at the moment.
Lucy, yeah, I'm just saying that while obviously it's not the ideal situation, I think that's the most sensible route forward and I propose that we accept the recommendation.
John.
I'd say we've got to send the money, obviously. It's about to run out and I'm going to raise the throw away if we can as quick. But is it not possible when we put a new roof in to embed solar panels as part of the roof? Because you see that happening in lots of places. You put a new roof in and like on some of the new estates, particularly in Morton Road Trace Two, some plans are embedded in the roof. In other words, it saves money because you don't need so many tiles because you've got a solar panel there instead.
I did consider that when, discussions with all different companies. One of the issues is the heat that they give off. Because of the structure of this building, you've got a roof like this straight on. There is no void or a very little void to give out a lot of, or disperse a lot of the heat that comes from these panels. Because I wanted to do the same thing. Because it's the plant, you know, the trays that they sit in are actually cheaper than the tiles. So it can be worth doing. I don't think it's been possible in this type of building because retrofitting it into an older building. That's the advice I've got at the moment. With technology, some are saying that they're a bit better for the heat, but that's the advice we're getting at the moment. That's a system where, a traditional system where it's set above the roof, it's better at the moment.
For a building this, yeah.
This type of building. So in new builds, you've often got a lobbed space underneath it, a lot more, a lot more space to lose that heat heated. But, you know, I've investigated that as well.
We'll just come back on that, John.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Lee. I mean, obviously that makes a lot of sense. When you put panels on top, there's some space at the leaf. But you want to make sure you protect the pigeons nesting and people at the same time. So whatever we do, we're going to do it, make sure there's pigeon infection. I just wondering if there's some way when we ask for quotes, that we see if anybody wants to quote for installing it, you know, installing panels as part of it, we can see what they come back as. And just to ask the question, they may say, for all the reasons you're saying, it's not possible. But there might be a business out there who's got the trick for doing that perhaps. I don't know what the trick would be, but there might be some trick that would make it possible. All I'm asking is that we ask for possibility because this is going to cost more than £24,000 to pay this now. And we spend our money as wisely as we can. But if that's possible, why would we like that?
Absolutely, we definitely would want to look at it again. The university has done quite a bit of work on it.
I know.
The heat is a bigger issue with solar panels. But, yeah, when we go to quotes, people ask again that companies are not keen to sell it to us, which is a bigger suggestion than that is probably my take still.
Yeah. What big?
It's worth noting, this will be thirty odd thousand pounds that we've agreed to date and on the building that we have no income from. So. And though that money's in new own bonus, it's been a long time waiting to be dealt with. We have discussed it and Lee has endlessly come back with various things over the very years to try and move forward the solar panel things. I take from what the town clerk says that the idea of putting brackets in his parent for future, so that means it will be possible in the future to consider that. But I still, no objection to spending the money to keep the building tight. But I do refer back to what I said earlier. We need to have a really deep look at the income stroke generation of what this building actually produces, its costs and how we sustain that. Because that's 30,000 odd pounds tonight and just agreed. And there's many things in the town that other people would like us to spend money on as well. So I think we do need to bring it back and have a really deep dive into the finance of it.
I think, I mean, it should be noted that this £24,000 was specifically for solar panels and the town clerk and Lee have worked really hard to get the permission to use it to, for the structure of the roof and get that fit to, in the future, put solar panels on. If it wasn't being spent on that building, we wouldn't have it. So it's not that the town council is spending that money on that bill, on that whole amount of money on that building at this stage. And I think that it's very important to note that. Andy.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, I've heard what the argument is about solar panels and I agree to council. I'm very passionate about solar panels and we should have it. But I don't think we should go down the route, having heard from Lee that he tried to find an alternative to piles, to roof piles, because it will not work. And we don't go that road and waste office time again in pursuing that line.
I think that's, I think you're probably right. There's a lot of time being spent on it, writing, I mean.
Have we had a second for the proposal?
I don't know that we have.
If so, then I'm happy to second it.
Did we have a? Thank you, Lucy. Yeah, so Amy is seconding. So shall we move to the votes now?
Yes.
Yeah. Recommendation is to proceed with obtaining quotes to replace a southern face of the roof. All those in favour. Well, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. The cemetery, this is Lee again, cemetery fees, reporting estate manager.
Yeah, this is really the uplift, which we'll do every year. We use the up to October. And it's just to set the fees for coming here for the cemetery.
Bobby.
Happy to really uplift, but also like to put in now. I was up there the other day looking around and I think credit to you all for the quality of the maintenance which is going on up there. It is a pleasant tranquil place and the new area which you worked hard on for the cremations up there, that's really quite nice. And I think we should sort of note that there's been a lot of work done up there and it has been well appreciated and it is of a good quality that, you know, bringing this money and that's what people are funded, you know, in their family.
Thank you, Bobby. Do we have a second? Well, I'm going to talk to you. You're seconding it. So anybody else wish to speak on this? Those in favour? That's unanimous again, thank you. And then again, from Lee, updates to Brackley Road Cemetery handbook.
Yeah, it's just, something to do every year is to review the handbook, make sure it's up to date and if anything needs changing, there's only one minor change really. And that was just to add some more detail back to the memorials that we did in the, for the cremated remains. It was queried if someone this year could have a slightly taller one. So we only noticed in the handbook, it wasn't exactly how high the pyroverse can be, so just paraplegic.
Yeah.
John.
I mean, it's the Brackley Road Cemetery. I don't know if people have been watching what's been happening in Brackley itself. I imagine the officers are being looking across thinking, oh my God, could that happen here? There's been a huge control scene in Brackley.
Well, I think it's a slightly different setup, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. I understand that, but I'm just, I guess my question for, well, for the officers is, are we confident that we have a handbook that will head off any risk of something like that happening here in our town?
Um, it is something that we did discuss in quite a lot, a few weeks back when it first was breaking with the, I forget what I'm saying here. Yeah. As much as we can be, I suppose, is my answer.
I'm just asking a question because having watched the elevator and downed some social media about it, it's become acidic from a whole variety of angles. I don't know how it's going to affect the town council elections, but it's something that we don't want to happen here in Buckingham. Because it seems to have got very, very nasty, very divisive and I feel for all of those involved there.
Can I just check, do we actually have separate areas for children's rooms?
Not necessarily, but we will do.
Okay, so that's something that we can.
Yeah.
We've just started work this, yeah, the last couple of weeks in the new handbook for the new cemetery.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Obviously, it's to be borne in mind.
That's all I want. And it is.
And Bobby.
I think when, I think territories are always very difficult.
I know.
When we originally took on the cemetery, we were not the burial authority for some time. It's still resigned with the district council. We had our own problems that we were not the burial authority. The burial authority did things like topple chests and stuff. We had no say over it, they were still the burial authority. So, and that was quite difficult for the town and it was quite difficult for the people involved. But the town council didn't become the burial authority to at least 12 to 18 months after the handover. I think the fact that we're, the officers are telling us that they're going to make provision, the fact that all these things are immensely sensitive for those involved and, and, and we wouldn't wish anyone to be involved in those things. But I think I'm assured from what the officers said that with future planning, the Brackley Road Cemetery handbook will probably be a guide to help build the new, but for the new cemetery, some of the synergies will be in there. And, and we are where we are, but we still have the responsibility to be that cemetery for a very, very, very long time. So I think we should just agree the handbook, I suppose, and be guided by our officers, by anything that they find that we need to take to the graduation of a future meeting around the issues. If there's something they think we need to be brought to our attention, it'd be much better to be brought. If there's something they think we need to be brought to our attention, it'd be much better to be brought through a written report um, based upon evidence and just what we think. I think so. If there's something, I trust the officers to bring us forward something in future.
Anybody else? Did we have a person? Another person? Please second up. Okay, okay. I think you've had that already, Robin, for me. Well, Robin, first, Robin's seconded, thank you. Um, so all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. So the next one is higher rates increase for local sports and community centre. And yeah.
I propose that we accept the recommendations.
I'll second that.
That adds to the second one.
No, I can buy.
Go on.
I'll second.
Absolutely seconded.
Make them let them take a turn.
All those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. And then. So, um, the next meeting is Monday night June, um, which will be in the new council. And I'd just like to say that, um, first out has done the bench survey. Um, and that will be on your agenda at the next meeting, but we can't discuss it. It's not on this agenda. So thank you. Um, we now need to go to private session. So all, all those in favour of going into private session? Thank you very much.